Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. I think we will have Mr. Tapia read some background for the virtual meeting first.
Yes, good evening Chair Doran, members of the public and fellow commissioners. For those who are attending this meeting virtually, if you do want to leave a comment during the public comment portion of this meeting, on your screen you will see a hand icon. Please feel free to click on that and that'll notify staff. You do have a comment to share. Otherwise, if you are listening to this meeting via via phone, if you go ahead and click star nine on your keypad, that'll also indicate a staff if you have a comment or not. Other than that, for the presenters tonight or the applicants who will be presenting, you can just please turn off your microphone and your webcams when your item is not on. Otherwise, when your item is up, please feel free to turn on your webcam and microphone. Other than that, that's all I have for now. Chair Doran.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the meeting to war. It appears we have a quorum. We have Commissioner Barnes, Dicardi, Harris, Kennedy, and Riggs and myself. So we have six members tonight. I did have an email, but Commissioner Tate was not going to be able to make it tonight. I think first we will ask for any reports or announcements from Mr. Prada and welcome to our meeting. We haven't been graced with your presence so often lately, so it's good to see you back.
Thank you Chair Doran and members of the commission. It's good to be back. So let's see, I do have a few updates. The first one, just if any planning commissioners were tracking the council's calendar, the special meeting for tomorrow has been canceled. The next meeting would be the following Tuesday, seven twenty, also as a special meeting. So just kind of from a calendar standpoint, wanted to give an update there. In addition, the Menlo Uptown project that the commission reviewed at its last meeting and approved the entitlements and certified the EIR and then recommended approval to the city council for the major subdivision component of the project. That project has been appealed to the city council, so the entitlements and the EIR certification were appealed. We actually received two appeals, one from the Sequoia Union High School District, and then a second appeal from council member Taylor. And so we will be looking for some meetings in upcoming schedule with the council to determine when the project can be reviewed by the city council on appeal. In the interim, we're also looking at the scheduling for the major subdivision as well. So stay tuned for that. We'll provide the commission with updates as they become available. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to take any questions on either update or any other topics.
Do you have any questions from the commission from Mr. Prada? Doesn't look like it. We'll move on to public comment now. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up or brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. So Mr. Tapia, do we have any public comments, general public comments?
Good evening again Chair Doran. Again, just as a reminder for those who are virtually watching this meeting, you should see a hand icon on your screen. Please feel free to click on that to notify staff that you do have a comment. Alternatively, if you are listening to this meeting, just go ahead and click star nine on your keypad and that'll do the same thing by notifying staff. But at this moment Chair Doran, I'm not seeing any comments, but we can give it a couple of seconds.
Yeah, let's let's give it just a little bit, see if you can run this. So you don't see anything?
Looks like we do have one comment, Chair Doran.
Okay.
So with your permission, I will go ahead and introduce them.
Yes, please.
Okay, so I will go ahead and introduce Sylvia Gray. Just a reminder Sylvia, you can please state your first and last name, your political jurisdiction which you live in, and just note that you are limited to three minutes, so you should have the ability to activate your microphone now.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you can, can you see me?
No.
Okay, sorry. I don't know.
Camera is enabled for public comments. It's normally not.
Okay. Well, I just have one quick comment. So Sylvia Gray, four one four Laurel Avenue, Menlo Park, nine four zero two five. And I have already addressed this with with Leo. However, I just wanted to make it public and ask the the contractors that are going to be doing the work at four twenty.
I'm sorry, this, this is for general public comments. We will have an opportunity for public comment on tomorrow when we get to that on the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. I'll talk to you later then. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any general public comments for items not on the agenda?
Not seeing any virtual hands, Chair Doran.
Okay, with that, I will close the public comment and we'll move to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar tonight, the approval of minutes from June seventh. And we also have an architectural control at one hundred Middlefield Rock Road. It's a request for architectural control to construct a new fence and gate structure on the exterior of an existing commercial building in the C four general commercial district. We do have a staff report on that. But it's in the consent calendar now. If anyone has any comments, we should remove that for the consent counter, has corrections to the minutes. Now is the time to speak up, otherwise we'll vote on the consent calendar. Hearing none? Oh, Commissioner Dicardi?
I'll move to adopt a consent calendar as submitted.
We have a second. Mr. Kennedy seconded, so I'll call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Dicardi?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs? That looks like a yes to me, so I will note it as a yes for the record and I will vote yes. So the consent calendar passes as submitted six to zero. Moving along to the public hearing. The first item up is a use permit for Stephen Rue at ten twenty six Cascade Drive. It's a request for a use permit to construct first floor additions and perform interior and exterior modifications to an existing non-conforming, single-story, single-family residence in the R one S single-family suburban residential zoning district. The value of the proposed work would exceed seventy-five percent of the replacement value of the existing non-conforming structure in a twelve-month period and therefore requires the use permit. We of course have a staff report on this one and just seeing who's staff reported is. This is Mr. Pruder. Do we have Mr. Pruder with us?
Good evening Chair Doran. Yes, I am here. Reporting as staff, there are no additional announcements at this time for this project, but I am happy to assist with any questions you may have. Thank you.
Do we have any initial clarifying questions from Mr. Pruder from the commission? Not seeing any at this time. Mr. Prada, can you just remind me, do we go to public comments next or do we hear from the applicant next?
Good question. You can, I would do the applicant's presentation and then go into public comments.
Okay. Do we have someone representing the applicant? Mr. Kim?
Hi.
Any questions for us?
I do. I think Vaughn is preparing that for the screen. And once I get control, I'll move into full screen. All right. Well, good evening honorable commissioners. My name is Q Young Kim. It's Q like the letter Q. I'm a local Palo Alto, so in the city next door and I'm a residential architect. Tonight I'll actually be presenting two projects before the commission, but I'll start with this one at ten twenty six Cascade Drive. And as Mr. Pruder has given you the staff report, this is for a use permit to remodel and add on to this existing single-family residence. So just some quick background, I don't mean for this presentation to be a a full thorough review of the drawings. I trust that you've had the time to review those, but as far as the neighborhood that we're talking about, this is in Sharon Heights. So I'll just quickly point out Sand Hill Road that stretches along here along with two eighty. North is true north, so straight up. And as we zoom in onto the site, this is again at ten twenty six Cascade Drive. So here is a street view image of what the residence currently looks like or actually looked like a couple of months ago. The bushes have grown quite a bit since I do have some updated pictures, but just as an overall street view of the residence, it's a single-family residence, single-story. And it is kind of set slightly below street level, so the site does actually drop off quite a bit as you get further and further back onto the site. I'm showing you some updated pictures of how those bushes and the vegetation has actually grown since that Google Street image was taken. So the residence is quite shielded from the street. Here is an aerial view of the residence itself. Here is the roof plan of ten twenty six Cascade. The property extends quite a bit back. And what we're proposing is a full remodel of the existing residence along with an addition towards the back of the house itself. So the addition will not occur anywhere on the sides or the front of the property, but it will simply be in addition towards the rear of the property. I did mention how the site drops off quite a bit and that proved to be quite a challenge because of the daylight planes and the maximum heights that are taken from an average grade, which is actually we found out from two points. So they're from the extremes, the highest extreme and the lowest extreme. And in our case, the lowest extreme is actually quite a bit lower than where the average grade of the existing residence actually lies. So we've had to actually change our roof pitches and we initially started with quite a high plate height in the remodel portion of the house that we had to then bring back down. But just as a refresher, that's what the house looks like from the street. And here's just a quick sketch of what the house will look like after the remodel. So we're basically bringing this house up to two thousand twenty-one. The house was built probably close to fifty years ago now. And we are working with the Rue family and I believe Stephen Rue was actually in attendance in the meeting. But they are a family that's lived in this residence since two thousand seven and they simply wish to extend the house as their girls have now grown up and I believe there one is in high school and one is in middle school. And they just want to modernize the residence that they live in, especially considering the neighborhood and the the basic Bay Area vicinity in which they live. There's another close-up of the the house. Again, we're not proposing any addition to the front of the house. It's just a pure remodel. And then more of an aerial view of how we extend portions of the house in the rear further back. We do not actually sit at the rear proper or the rear setback line. There still is quite a bit of a distance between the rear property line and the rear setback even with the addition. But I felt that that might just give you a quick overview of the project. And again, I trust that you've seen the plans that were attached to the staff report, but at this point, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the commission from Mr. Kim? Okay. Hearing none, I think we will move to public comments on this project. Mr. Tapia, do we have any hands raised?
Good evening again Chair Doran, members of the public. As a reminder, if you do want to leave a comment for this item at this time, please feel free to click on that hand icon on your screen if you are watching this meeting virtually. Otherwise, if you are listening into this to this meeting, please feel free to click on star nine on your keypad. That'll also indicate a staff that you have a comment. And at this time Chair Doran, I'm not seeing any comments, but as usual, we can give it a couple of seconds or so to see.
Yeah, we can do it a little bit.
Okay.
Still no hands raised?
I can confirm Chair Doran that there are no virtual hands.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to our virtual dais for discussion. Do we have anyone who would like to comment on the application? Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I'm, I really like this project. I think, you know, it heartens me when I see a project come before us from a neighborhood that has in the recent past really been about tearing down and building new. And this theme, you know, it's a really nice, it's a really nice update and upgrade to the to the to the space. You know, and I would move that we approve this project.
You have a second? Mr. Riggs, did you want to comment or just second?
Um, I don't think any need really to comment. It's a handsome project, very low impact and I'm happy to second the motion to approve per the staff recommendation.
Yeah, I would like to just express my agreement with that. I think it's a very easy project to approve. Very low impact on the neighbors or anyone else and within really all the parameters that are set for it. So I will call up Mr. Kennedy, oh, sorry, Dicardi.
Yeah, I agree. I have a question of Mr. Pruder. I think it's an attractive project. I'm fine with the non-conforming pieces. My question is about the the cost of the construction and that's the need for the use permit because it exceeds evaluation in a twelve-month period. We don't get this before us very often. Can you explain why we have that rule in place? Number one and number two, how often do you get that type of request?
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair Dicardi. I guess to start with, we can go over the nature of needing the valuation calculation. With non-conforming buildings, it's on a building by building basis. And so every building that is non-conforming that has work done goes through this process of valuation. We created a spreadsheet several years back that helped to create an assessment by which certain thresholds would be met that could trigger a use permit. And we have that also enshrined in our zoning ordinance that there are triggers. And so if you have a one-story development, it differs from a two-story development and this is for mostly residentially zoned zoning districts that it's most common. One thing I would add to clarify as well is the fact that a lot of these involve calculations at the building permit stage and sometimes it does require a use permit, but we have many that have work for which the value does not exceed the use permit threshold and therefore doesn't have to go through the planning commission process. This is one such project where it exceeded that particular percentage threshold. In the case of one-story development, seventy-five percent. And this project was more than that. And so it needed to go through the use permit process for this particular request.
And if this was conforming, I'm sorry to through the chair, can I just ask a follow-up?
Sure.
If this were a conforming project, then it would not have come before us. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Mr. Pruder, if I could just try to interpret that, I mean, I think the intent of the rule is that it's a non-conforming structure and by doing a remodel that exceeds seventy-five percent of the value, it's essentially a new building. It's close to a new building and so someone's building a new non-conforming structure on the side, even though it is not any more non-conforming than the old structure. I think that's the reason, the the policy reason for the use permit. I don't know if that's your perception, Mr. Pruder.
I am happy to defer this to our liaison, Mr. Prada as well, but it's a good assessment, I think, to make that comment. But I would also add the importance of the fact that we are not allowing for an expansion of a non-conformity with this work. We are just allowing non-conforming buildings to maintain the same non-conformity and we have allowed for various forms of work to occur under that understanding.
Did you want to add anything to that, Mr. Prada?
Yes, maybe, maybe I can just add a little bit. So I think Matt did a really good job of explaining our process, the valuation. And so I think one thing Chair Doran, that you mentioned that I think is important is it's not so much a new structure as it's prolonging the life, if you will, of an existing non-conforming structure. It's effectively the same idea, but I think that's how the ordinance is read is that there's an idea that the value, the policy question for the planning commission before you is should this structures non-conformities be prolonged by these improvements that exceed a certain value, right? And so like below a value, it could be assumed that it it's may not prolong in the useful life of the structure to the same extent as over seventy-five percent for a single-story, fifty percent for a two-story structure. And I will say that the the city uses values that kind of level the playing field, if you will, between all square footage, so it's not based on assessed value per se, because that can vary wildly between two properties, of course. So it, we do use construction values that our building division has set up ten plus years ago. And they provide the ratio that we're looking at there, just to kind of expand on that a little bit as well.
Thank you. Continuing our education here. So we have a motion in a second. I'd like to call for a vote. Commissioner Barnes? Yes? Commissioner Dicardi?
Yeah, although yes, just to finalize on my comment briefly. It makes sense and if this were wildly out of conformance, I might have a different opinion about this project, but it's not. And so I'm happy to prove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Although yes, so motion passes as submitted six to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have a use permit from Thomas James Holmes at four twenty Laurel Avenue. It's a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence in the attached garage and construct a new two-story residence with an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R one U, single-family urban residential zoning district. So we have, is this Mr. Tapia on this report? It is.
Yes, that is correct, Chair Doran. I'm back.
Um, Commissioner Dicardi?
Yeah, I've been informed by Mr. Tapia that I'm conflicted out on this because of my geographic proximity. So to staff, I believe I'm just going to turn off my camera. I'll listen and then join back in at the next item. Is that correct?
Kyle, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, that, that's correct. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Right. Thank you for letting us know. So Mr. Tapia, do you have anything to add to the staff report?
I have no updates Chair Doran, but I am available for any questions that the commission may have.
Right, thank you. Do we have commissions, questions from the commission? It's like we don't. So do we have someone here from the applicant to do a presentation or review?
Chair Doran, there are some members of the applicant team here to briefly discuss the project.
Good evening Chair Doran and members of the commission. My name is Cynthia Tebow with Thomas James Holmes. Thank you for letting me present this project this evening, four twenty Laurel Avenue. Just to give a summary of the project, this project's located in the R one U as mentioned, lot size is seven thousand square feet. It is fifty wide by one forty deep. Reason for the use permit being the width of the lot at fifty feet. It is located in the flood zone AE. We are proposing to demolish a ranch-style home, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five square feet approximately with a detached two-car garage built in nineteen thirty-nine. And we're proposing to build a new two-story residence, four-bedroom, three-bath with a two-car attached garage. Approximately twenty-two thousand three hundred and eighty square feet livable. Regarding the style, so we're proposing a farmhouse design with a combination of board and bat with an accent of horizontal siding for a balanced and cohesive aesthetic. Given the different styles in the neighborhood and the mixture of one and two-story homes, we feel like this home is going to blend in nicely into the neighborhood context. Height of the home is proposed at twenty-six feet eleven. We did play around a little bit with the the ceiling heights. First floor being mainly at nine feet six and second floor being at nine. But we did bump up certain rooms to get a little bit of a higher plate height while also trying to maintain that lower massing in addition to being in a flood zone. Regarding trees, there were twenty-two trees analyzed on this property. Nineteen on our actual property, three were off-site. Of those sixteen were not heritage trees, six of them were heritage. And we are proposing to remove one heritage tree. Which is tree number eleven in your packet. And is proposed for removal due to health and noted defects and in addition to the proximity of the development. And we are proposing to replace that tree with a thirty-six-inch box magnolia as well as a second thirty-six-inch box magnolia that we added for privacy concerns. And then in addition to that, we are also proposing two new fifteen-gallon trees on in the side yard where the existing tree number eleven was sitting. And then let's see, we have privacy. So regarding privacy, we had a rear neighbor reach out with concerns about privacy. We are sixty-two feet tenant is set back from the rear property line on with a proposed home. In addition to a fifteen-foot alley behind that, the existing home does have quite a bit of trees in the rear. We're proposing to retain two of the existing trees and then the two new thirty-six-inch box trees are proposed to be added in that rear area so that we can maintain a nice canopy back there and privacy for the neighbors. Regarding windows, we have raised several window sills on the sides of the home to six feet. We maintain a couple of lower sills, so we've got three-foot sill in the front, in the very front bedroom on the side as well as a bedroom two for egress. And then we have a four-foot sill in the primary bath for light and in the laundry for light as well. But other than that, the side windows were raised to a six-foot sill for privacy. And then we had a neighbor comment about tree trimming in the rear, so we are getting an arborist report for tree trimming recommendations to make sure we're trimming that and while protecting the trees. Let's see. And I think that covers most of the concerns. So the neighbors were notified twice throughout the project and they noted.
Hey, P, you want to come and see what Norma's garden is going to look like?
They, they noted.
Mr. Dicardi, if you could turn off your mic, please? Sorry.
No worries. And so, yeah, just regarding the neighbors, there was concerns regarding privacy, regarding trees, window sills, fencing. And I believe we responded to all of those concerns. Regarding fencing, we're just proposing to replace with a new six-foot fence on the property line, but we usually, before we start any kind of demolition or construction, we will coordinate with the neighbors on site as we discuss what type of fencing will be replaced and where it will go on the property. I am here for any questions that you guys have and we also have our Architect Joe Williams on the call from KTGY.
Thank you. Do you have questions from the commissioner for Mr. Dicardi? Not seeing any at this time. We'll have another chance when we get to our discussion. So I'd like to open for a public comment on this project now. I know we had one person or other wanted to comment on it. I believe, is it? I believe, is it Ms. Malaton who's now handling questions? Mr. Pruder, are you going to? Okay, thank you. Do we have hands raised now?
Thank you, Chair Dorn. I'm looking now, and at the moment, I don't see any hands raised. But as a reminder, anyone who is interested in having a public comment heard at this meeting for this item is welcome to raise their hand. And if they are on the phone, they can press star nine. And I do see one hand, and I believe it was our previous commenter, Ms. Sylvia Gray. So with your permission, I can activate her microphone and she can have her comment.
Yes, with with my apologies for the attempted public comment earlier, please go ahead.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you very much. And Ms. Gray, I am now unmuting your microphone. And you should be able to speak now.
Ms. Gray, I don't know if you have your own microphone muted or your computer muted, but we can't hear you.
Okay.
We can hear you now.
All right. Thank you. I am Sylvia Gray. I live at four-one-four Laurel Avenue, which is right next to four-twenty on the west side. Thank you for letting me speak. I I have two comments, please. I recently noticed on the plans that the driveway between our driveways are very close together. And in between the driveway is a square area that has been a planted area. And I asked Mr. Tapia if what is going to happen to that particular space since it, the property line goes right through that area. He said that the Thomas James is planning to gravel the sidewalk area and and he wasn't quite sure what was going to happen to that area. I am suggesting or asking the representative from Thomas James to look at that and possibly just have it filled in and be part of the sidewalk as opposed to just leaving it as a square with with soil and and no one really taking care of it. So I am I'm leaving that 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 question. And then regarding fencing, I was told by the the project manager that on my side of the property that a fence would be built in front of my fence. Originally, my fence was going to be removed and their fence was going to be put up. I have a very attractive sturdy fence and I was challenging their wanting to remove my fence. And then what would happen is that new fence would not match my property. So I was told that they came to the conclusion, and it was on the plans, that they would build their fence parallel to mine. I just want to reconfirm that that is going to happen. Because when Ms. Tybo spoke, she said they were going to decide about the fences as as the project went on. So can you please clarify that for me, please?
We will try to do so. I think you're out of time, but thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any other public comments, Mr. Pruder?
It appears that we do not have any additional public comments at this time. We can wait a moment more if you'd like to ensure that there are.
We've had time during that comment for people to answer. And so I think I'd like to move along.
Sounds good.
Bringing it back to the dais, I think I'll lead off. I would like to, first of all, clarify the Ms. Gray's question. Ms. Teal, I'm not sure what she's talking about, the gravel in front. Is it what we usually call a planting strip in between the sidewalk and the street? And I think she's afraid that that won't be maintained. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes. So it looks like currently there is the driveway with a little planting area between the two driveways located right on the property line. Our proposed driveway is essentially going to go in a similar location to the existing. And so there will be still a little planting strip area in a similar location, essentially. So if it's something that, you know, we need to look at changing, we can do that. But as of right now, I believe it's just going to be a planter area as it is existing today.
Okay, so I guess I misunderstood then. So that's in between the two driveways. It's not between the sidewalk and the street. And it's it's presumably on this house's side of the property line. Is that correct?
It kind of jogs both properties and it is between the sidewalk and the street. So it is a little planting strip located. It's kind of between. So there's the property line, there's the sidewalk, and then there's the planting strip. Then along the property line, there's this driveway and this driveway. So it's creating this little box of a planter area, essentially.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other comment about the fence. So your current plan is to build a new fence on your side, the property line, parallel to the existing fence?
Yes. So we approach fencing a little bit differently for every project that we do. And it really depends on the neighbors. We have a conversation with every neighbor on all sides of our property. And we'll either, and you know, depends on what they prefer, but sometimes we'll put it on the property line, we'll replace it. Or we can build a new fence right up against the existing if they prefer to keep it. So it sounds like that is what they prefer in this case, and that's definitely what we can do.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Riggs.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, if I could ask Ms. Tebow. So this would be regarding that shared planting strip. I'm familiar with that. That that happens fairly often, particularly among the narrow lots. And when two driveways just happen to be in the next to each other, that area becomes a no man's land. And sometimes it is maintained by one of the property owners, and sometimes it's maintained by neither. Often people think because it's out in the sidewalk that it will be maintained by the city, and that's the the last likely guess, as we know. So I'd like to ask whether you considered planting something simple and durable, arctica or cianophus, and providing an extension of your irrigation system so that you could know that that would be, that that would continue to live. And if it's something low like those, those two I suggested, well, there's a million cianophus, but you know, a ground cover perhaps. If that would perhaps be beneficial both to your project and to the neighbor.
Yeah, we can definitely look into doing something like that, a ground cover, and then making sure that there is irrigation going through to that little section.
And perhaps you could touch base with Mr. Tapia to make sure that this is not objectionable to four-one-four or to the city. But it just seems like a simple, well, perhaps not as simple for you, but it seems like a conclusive response. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have other comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Kennedy.
Yeah, you know, all of these Thomas James homes are quite attractive. You know, by now, it's like a, you know, there's a method, right? Like, you know, this is what they look like. You know, it is interesting to me, the the number of homes going up in a variety of neighborhoods that have this farmhouse look. Because no matter where they are, they all look very cookie cutter to me. This one does have some elements that make it less like that. There's, you know, there's some treatments that I do appreciate. I would move that we approve this project because I it's, you know, yeah, I would just move that we approve the project.
We have a second. Commissioner Harris. Well, that was a second. Okay. Commissioner Riggs.
Oh, all right. I have a follow-up question, if I may, or an additional question. It has to do with the landscaping. And we heard that a couple of magnolia trees would be planted in the rear of the lot. I just wanted to prompt some thought about which magnolia. There are quite a number of species available in the Bay Area. A street tree is often Magnolia grandiflora, which grows very dense, very dark, and drops things. And you may or may not want to have that in a backyard since they also grow very big. They sort of don't stop growing. So I was just curious whether you had given some thought or maybe indicated on the plans. Sorry, I can't read everything at the computer screen level. What, you know, what variety of magnolia?
Yeah, so it is proposed to be a Magnolia edith boge is our proposal, and we can definitely look into that and make sure it's one that doesn't grow too too thick, if that's a concern.
Well, definitely sounds like you gave it some thought, and that's really all I wanted to ask. All right. Thank you.
We have a motion and Commissioner Harris seconded the motion. So I'd like to call for a vote. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty is recused. Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes, and my daughter would like to weigh in as well. She loves it.
Good to know. Commissioner Riggs. Looks like you're mouthing yes, but I didn't hear anything. You're on mute.
I clicked it twice, I think. Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the proposal is approved six to zero. And we will move on. Commissioner Riggs. You're on mute.
Just indicating, I think it's five to zero since we have.
You are correct.
I'm missing. So.
DeCarty was recused, so that was a five to zero vote for the record. Thank you for the correction. So we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is item F three. This is a use permit and variance for Sunil Takshi at nine twenty-three Teresa Court. Request for a use permit to construct first and second floor additions, perform interior and exterior modifications to an existing single-family, single-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to lot depth in the R1U, single-family urban residential zoning district. Second floor addition would exceed fifty percent of the existing square footage and therefore requires a use permit. The proposal also includes a variance request to legalize the existing nonconforming ground floor front setback for the purpose of reconstructing needs. The project also includes a new ground floor accessory dwelling unit, ADU, which is a permitted use. And I see we have Commissioner DeCarty back present with us. We do we have any, Mr. DeCarty, did you want to say something? I saw your hand. Okay. So this one, this report is by Ms. Mador. Do we have her present to give us any additions or anything else you want to talk about on the report?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't have anything to add to the report right now. But if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We have any questions at this time? Not seeing any. So do we have the applicant or representative, the applicant, to talk about the, Mr. Kim again?
Yes. Long time no see, honorable commissioners. So just another similar type of presentation, just a quick intro.
Go ahead.
So this is nine twenty-three Teresa Court. And vicinity map again, which is how I typically like to start. So again, true north is straight up. You see Highway one-on-one over here towards the right. These are the old train tracks. This is Marsh Road. This is Bay Road. And Teresa Court is just off of Bay Road. So our site is actually fairly close to these old train tracks, and this is a court, so we're near the end of the cul-de-sac. This is what the house looks like today. It's a single-story, again, built in the seventies. And what we're proposing is to increase the house quite a bit. And we are adding a new second story as well as a ADU unit that you see off here to the right. So we're not pushing the house any further back as we're pretty close to the rear setback. But we are proposing to do an addition towards the side, which would be for the ADU at the ground level, and then a new second floor that would go above. And again, I trust that you've seen the drawings to study the elevations and the floor plans, but just to show you some perspectives of what we envision this house looking like. It would be kind of a fairly standard kind of a residential project that I'm sure you've seen around town and around the Bay Area these days. But it's a contemporary take on kind of a farmhouse, slightly craftsman. I showed you the side view here. This isn't a view that you would ever get from the cul-de-sac, of course. But this is the separate entry for the ADU that will be attached. So essentially, the the Takshi family have lived at this house since, I believe, two thousand eight. They've lived here for for quite a bit, and they too have two daughters. Their daughters are much younger, but they are growing daughters. And this is an example of a family that we're seeing more and more of here in the Bay Area where it's a multi-generational family. We all know how expensive and how outrageous housing costs here are. But we do have a need, especially for those of us that have younger children, to want to live with, to take care of our parents or to have our in-laws or parents be able to help out with our children as well. And so to accommodate the the number of family members and the the multi-generations that we have here, we've come up with a creative solution where we add on a first-floor ADU component that will allow the house to effectively be larger than what it is. If for any reason this house were to be sold, or even for the Takshi family themselves, they there is, of course, the ability to close off the ADU and make it completely separate so that it could be rented out to a separate family. Should that be the the preferred use. But in any case, we're proposing the second floor addition. While our immediate neighbors are single-family homes, there are four other homes on Teresa Court that have a second story. And I believe the second story has been designed in such a way that it is quite a bit set back from the street. And it does meet all of the second floor setback requirements. So we are trying to be mindful of making, creating the least amount of impact to the neighbors while effectively creating a better upgraded version of a street front to the end of Teresa Court. So I'll end my presentation there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission, from Mr. Kim at this time? Not seeing any. So I would like to open this to public comment. Mr. To P M. Can you let us know if we have any hands raised?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Doran, members of the public. Again, if someone does want to make a comment at this time, please feel free to click on that hand icon on your screen if you're watching this meeting. And if you are listening into this meeting, just please feel free to click on star nine on your keypad and that'll also indicate staff that you have a comment. And at this time, Chair Doran, I'm not seeing any comments, but as usual, we can give it a few, see if any come through.
Yes. I was seeing any hands.
I can confirm there are no virtual comments at this time, Chair Doran.
Yeah, I'd like to close public comments, bring it back to the Commission for further discussion. Does anyone want to speak on the project?
Yeah, I'd just like to say it. This is quite a different challenge from Cascade Drive for the architect. The Teresa Court lots are rather difficult. They are close to square. They are not very large and the houses start out with a fair amount of coverage already. And while I'm not a big fan of a really busy roof, I think the board and baton siding minimizes the in and out variation. And I think overall this works rather well. I can see some thought process went into the A D U and what sort of a little backyard it might have. And overall, this looks like a really nice solution. And as as long as I happen to know, I perhaps Mr. Kim would like to share with the clients that the adjacent neighborhood is has addressed Caltrans and the city about having a sound wall built along one oh one. And this end of Teresa Court has unfortunately a wide acoustic opening to the freeway noise. And so his client and or the neighborhood might actually want to join the Laurel Line neighborhood in in trying to make something happen there. So I don't have any other comment on this project.
Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I agree. It's a good looking project. Agree with Commissioner Riggs's assessment. And I want to call out and commend Senior Planner Mayador for the staff report, especially walking through the criteria on the variance request. I thought that was well done and well explained for any member of the public to understand it. And not to jump anybody else's comments, but I would move approval of the project.
We have a second. Mr. Kenny's got their hand raised. So motion a second, like to call for a vote. Christopher Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarty, did I skip you?
I'm a yes.
Fisher Riggs.
Yes.
Well, I'd just like to add one comment before I it's been my vote. I really want to echo Commissioner Riggs's comments about busy roof lines. This is a particular pet peeve of mine in architecture. But I I really feel that the second floor setback requirements and the daylight plane requirements that we have in Menlo Park force this on a lot of projects. So I don't I don't hold against the architect in this case, but I think we end up with some roof lines that are, to me at least, not aesthetically pleasing, but I think that that is that's a trade off for the setbacks and daylight plane requirements we have for it. So having gotten that into the record, I'm now going to vote in favor of the project. And it will be approved six zero.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Planner Mette.
So that closes the public hearing portion of today's meeting. We'll move to informational items. Mr. Prada.
Yes, thank you. So looking forward on the planning commission's calendar, our next meeting is July twenty sixth. That meeting, we have one single family home, so lighter meeting currently planned for that lighter agenda, excuse me, for that meeting. Looking further forward to August, we do anticipate tentatively potentially bringing a final E I R to the Planning Commission for the Menlo Portal project and potentially a initial study and O P scoping session for our proposed life science building eleven twenty five O'Brien, still working out the details on which which meeting dates. But just want to give the Commission a heads up that those are tracking for some tentative dates within the August timeframe. And with that, that concludes my reports announcements. Happy to answer any questions.
We have any? Commissioner DeCarty?
Do you have any more insight on when we may be coming back in person for our planning commission meetings as opposed to remote than from previous?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't right now. I think I should have an update probably within the next few weeks as we're looking at kind of our reopening, reactivation of in person work plan. We have been open the whole time, so I don't want to say reopening as you're aware, but we are looking at bringing our services back in in person. Commissions and council will be a part of that plan. And so we'll keep you posted and give you advanced notice as well to to continue planning. It very well might be a hybrid to start. So just kind of, you know, thinking ahead and kind of giving some insight here. We'll we'll continue to figure it out as we put our plan in place and keep the Commission updated and provide you as much advanced notice as possible, of course.
You have any other questions for Mr. Prado? Okay, well, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting tonight. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
And thank you to our Chair for an especially efficient meeting at eight oh one P M.
Thank you, Chair Doran. Thank you, everybody.
Impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.